The meeting for order. So, welcome everyone. And for a roll call, I know that Tom Dory is not going to be with us tonight.
Jessica Giles is not going to be with us.
Jessica's not going to be with us. Scott is here.
Giles is right here. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. He's here. Good. And Dakota, do we?
Didn't hear it through Dakota. So, we'll have to see.
Might want to check in with him. He was at the last meeting.
Good point. I will, yes.
Great. We did receive the minutes from our last meeting, which was September 6th. Looking for a motion to approve those minutes, please. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Any opposed? And we have an extension.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, he weren't there.
Rob Wolling. No, it's Rob Wolling.
I forget. Great. We do not have any adjustments to the agenda tonight.
Correct.
We do have somebody who signed up to address the board this evening, so I'll invite Mary Ann Royal to come up first.
Okay. I was thinking I'd be later in the agenda.
Oh, no, you're first.
Okay. So, I am here. I've cut short a vacation at the beach, so I could be here because what I wanted to talk to you about is of real concern to me. And it's concerned to me because of the years I spent as an elementary guidance counselor. If I were concerned, I'd be still on the beach watching this beautiful sunset. But I'm not. I'm here with Sam between my toes. And I'm here because of the children. As an elementary guidance counselor, I often had to work -- had not had to. I would work with children that were living in difficult life circumstances with an elementary school counselor. I often had to assure the child that, no, Daddy did not leave because you broke his watch. Your little sister did not die of cancer because you wished she would go away. The cat didn't get run over because you -- you see where I'm going with this? Elementary school children's process those kinds of events in a very ecocentric way. You have middle school children who are more connected to their world now and aware of dynamics that the younger children really aren't aware of out in the larger world that may well have concerns about some of what they're hearing in the larger world. So, those were the concerns that began to make me think about, well, what is happening to the children who are here, who may have been born here but whose parents are here illegally? And so, I began to be -- I began to just develop some understanding about what was happening and what was going on and what might be coming for them. And that's what initially brought me to talk with Scott. He's my representative from Winterport. So, I called him and began to talk to him about some of my concerns about the issues of immigration status and how it relates to schools. And so, he suggested that after a couple of meetings, we talked about what information might be helpful, and he suggested that we talk to the policy committee. So, I brought to the committee three documents. One was a document called Policy Considerations that I developed just based on what I had learned by just doing a little bit of research. One was an advisory to schools in Massachusetts from their attorney general. And the other was the Portland School District's resolution regarding those concerns. And taking those, Superintendent Lyons decided to submit to you the resolution that Portland used, and that's what you're considering today. So, my big concern is not whether you pass that resolution or not. My concern is that you help staff in the schools know what to do should they come across information, should someone -- something exciting that happened to you this summer should write about. Uncle Miguel coming from Mexico or Guatemala or El Salvador. What are they going to do with that information? And think about the implications of what they might do with that implication might have on that child, who would then, yes, be the reason why maybe Uncle Miguel was arrested. My whole concern in asking you to address this issue is to think about the children, whether they're in elementary school, middle school, or high school. You have a resource officer. What is his relationship to information that he may acquire? What do you want them to do with that information? How do you want to handle it? And yes, should a law enforcement agent come to a school, what do you want the staff at the school to do? What do you want the secretaries to do? What do you want the people in the lunchroom to do should, in a conversation with a child, they gain information that might impact them and their family? That's my concern, and that's something -- those are the things that I hope you'll take into consideration. So, if you don't want this particular resolution, what do you want? Hopefully, you will put something together that will assist everyone in the district with giving them guidance in what to do should this information come to them in an essay, in a conversation, in a concern, a fear that a child might have. That's why I'm here. That's what I wanted to say. And I will be interested to see what this district decides to do in order to make sure that children have a safe place and a place that's supportive to learn. Thank you.
Mary Ann, good. Is there anyone else that'd like to address the board this evening? Great. For board chair report, I don't have anything to report out, although I do want to just say thank you to those administrators of our school Facebook pages. It's been a joy to kind of stay up to speed on what's been going on in our schools. And I know that the feedback from the community has been extremely positive on all that's happening on Facebook. So, thanks a lot for that. Personnel.
Under personnel, we have one nomination this evening. If you reference your agenda notes, we have Olivia Comstock, life skills teacher at Reed Brook Middle School. You can see Olivia has a degree from Brigham Young University, extensive teaching experience throughout the country. Her salary for the collective bargaining contract, $45,637. My recommendation for your endorsement is Olivia Comstock, life skills teacher at Reed Brook Middle School.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Thank you, Olivia. Congratulations. Welcome. So, we move down to the superintendent schools report. Reading the essential behaviors and outcomes proclamation is Jessica.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of the changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our community to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Jessica. I'm in B. I did note to you in your agenda notes, the upcoming annual main school management conference of school board members is October 26th, 27th. At the October meeting, I'll have a draft agenda, but I would describe to you this way if you're not familiar. Those are two days where they have a number of workshops running concurrently. So, on a given hour and 15 minutes, you're able to choose anywhere from 12 to 15 workshop sessions. They've had great speakers in the past. Matter of fact, I'm very pleased this year, the day before, the executive director of the National Superintendents Group is addressing me superintendents. That's a pretty powerful presentation we'll have. So, please look at the opportunity to attend both days or one day. If you know you can do that now, just let Gloria know. She'll register you. I'll bring to you at our October 4th meeting, the draft agenda. And I'm looking around now, as I know you've been at those in the past. Do you want to make any comment on those days?
I highly recommend it. It's great. I get to meet other people within the state, you know, who are sitting in our chairs and learn a lot about a number of the initiatives that are going on. Seventy years ago, proficiency-based education was really ramping up, and it was very enlightening to sort of see what other districts are doing and how they're tackling some of these issues. So, yeah, it's really worth it.
Other people attended?
I went last year. I enjoyed it a lot. There was a lot of information. It was really helpful to gain a better understanding of the board, especially ending my first year on the board. So, it was really good.
Amanda?
Hey, Gray. With both of the things I said, it was nice to, you know, sometimes we sit around this table and try and solve these problems like no one else has ever dealt with them before and the other districts have. So, it's nice to hear.
Typically, there's 575 to 600 board members there. It's a very powerful, dynamic, two-day session. So, I would encourage you to try at least get one day, if not two, to attend that. Also, at the meeting in October, I'm going to bring to you what they call resolutions because our main school board association comes up with resolutions that I'll ask this board to act on. And we have to have what's called a voting delegate, that that delegate then goes down to the delegate assembly and then acts on your behalf on the resolutions that I'll present to you in October. So, it's a very well orchestrated and very well-defined workshop session for board members. So, we'll talk more about that next month. So, please put that in your calendar if you can. Financial statement overview. As you know, this is a new process for us. So, Reagan, I'll turn this over to you.
Okay. So, you have been handed out the most recent update to our budget by warrant articles document. And for audience members, there are copies available up at the desk, and we will be Just going to assist me with that. So, as we're getting that enlarged for viewing, what you'll see is a summary of each of the articles that was present in our budget this year and that was voted on in the district budget meeting. The far-right column indicates the percent remaining in each of these articles. And the secondary page that you were passed out gives you a breakdown of what you would find within each of the articles, so that you can kind of keep this as a reference for our monthly meetings, and you can ask any questions you have about particulars within the article. As far as expenditures go at this point in time, we are early in the school year, of course, so it would be typical to see that our expenditures have not been significant. There are a couple of articles I'd like to draw your attention to. If we look down at Article 10, that's debt service. Debt service typically is paid out and lump sums when it comes due. We will be seeing expenditures significantly from that article in October. And then, in Article 11, that is our school nutrition. This school nutrition, it has been running through the summer and been ordering food and having other aspects going on, especially in our summer program. We will be seeing a transfer from that article once we get what's called the claim. We have a claim form that goes in. It helps to determine what subsidy will be returned to us by the federal government, and then we'll make a decision about what we need to transfer if we need to.
But this -- that was above and beyond what they're spending already, right? That $33,000 was more than what food service was currently spending.
Correct.
Yes. And that's the -- this is the first time in a number of years that we've committed from the general fund budget money to support the food service department.
Are there any particular questions about articles or the documents self?
So, we'll be doing this monthly, Reagan, right? And obviously, you do with the finance -- we will do it with the finance committee as well.
And at the finance committee level?
One quick question, though, just because I'm not a financial person. Encumbrances are monies that we know are going to be spent but haven't been spent yet. Is that correct?
Right. We've dedicated, we've basically done the paperwork that it will be expended, but we haven't spent it yet.
Okay. So, like in Article 1, there's an encumbrance of $104,000, yada, yada, yada. That means you know that money's going to go out the door, the paperwork's done, but you just haven't sent it out yet.
Correct.
That's correct, Scott. Yep. It'd be like you writing a check, and your checking account, and you put in your ledger as a debt, but you haven't sent the check out yet.
Gotcha.
Only we have a little bit more zeros. I'm just kidding.
Yes. Well, no. It's certainly.
No, that's a good question, I see. So, this will be hopefully relevant information for you as we go through the months because you'll see the percentage is changing, obviously. And then, the other thing this will allow us to do, if we have -- following up on your question, Scott, if we find that we have some situations, we'll alert you, obviously, through this document, and most not to put special education under this umbrella, but usually that'll happen in any area more so than others. Or if you have something in fiscal plan that happens, would be another example. Okay? Very good. Thank you. Following up on Karen's point, another thing that we've done new this year, the second meeting of each month, you'll have a little overview for each building principal. I hope that you've enjoyed these and reading on what's going on in the school. Gives you a good snapshot of all six schools and a good summation of those issues, and hopefully you get a chance to visit the schools as well. So, that's the basic point behind that. Now, I would like to slow down to the next one, only because I've communicated with you since Thursday afternoon, and I don't want to maybe overamplify this, but I will put you on notice that, in my opinion, as your superintendent, I have very grave concerns about this initiative of CDS. And I'm going to ask Lynn to help me, as I walk through this, to basically inform you what's going on, what I know, as of Thursday. Child Development Services is a program that supports children with special needs ages three, four, and five. And basically, what's happening here, the main department of education is initiating for that to be now moved over to the public school setting. You saw my email on Thursday. I think I sent you the Bangor Daily News article. In that article, the estimate was, we're talking statewide of about 2,500 children. And a few things kind of went through my mind. Early on, I thought about this, and not in particular order. The first thing that came up, maybe surprising you too, was not money, it was space. And it struck me when we had the Department of Education here a couple of weeks ago, we walked them through Weatherby and McGrath, where these children wouldn't likely would go. We do not have space to accommodate any more children. So, space is number one issue. Number two is the fiscal note of fees. Now, Lynn, please explain to us, what are services typically these children receive in CDS today? What are the services they receive?
So, they could receive especially design instruction, which is kind of like direct instruction in a given area. Speech and language, OT, PT, psychological services. Transportation is going to be a big one. So, it's really whatever specialized services are currently being provided or identified now, CDS has the same.
Do they, Lynn, do they still have the, like, parent training? There was like a home life kind of part to the CDS for three- to five-year-olds. Is that, is that still ongoing? And that's another piece that schools don't get into at all.
I haven't discussed that piece, but that is still part of it.
That is, it's still part of it, yeah.
So, this news was just revealed on Thursday, which actually shocked my fellow colleagues, as I mentioned, Jane, today. One of my first calls was to Betsy Webb. Betsy, as we all know, is a superintendent at Bangor. She's the chair of the main school superintendent association, president. She knew nothing of this. Then I called our new executive director of main school management, Steve Bailey, who you and me at the conference. He knew nothing of this. This was promulgated by our own main department of education unbeknownst to the vast majority, although they made the claim in one of the articles that RSU-10 has been partnering with them. RSU-10's the Dixfield area, by the way. Tomorrow, ironically, our -- the main school, the banquet superintendents from Greenville to Melnockett, to Newport, to Holden area, we meet monthly, and tomorrow's our monthly meeting. And fortunately, Dr. Hassan, our commissioner, is going to be there. I'm not going to be overly aggressive, but I'm going to be very concerned about where this came about, what was the advocacy for this, where, as we try and preach here quite often, how do we listen input from our community to gain momentum on the topic? Why weren't superintendents or school boards involved in formulating a platform for this? They have this on the fast track to be in the legislature in three or four months. So, Monday, or maybe it was Sunday, I can't remember, I emailed our four legislators. And I look at NOS because we've talked endlessly, NOS, about having the legislators aware of what's happening and our advocacy thereup. We need to make sure our legislators know that this is front and center. Then my pessimism comes in. Now, remember, and please allow me to use approximate numbers, and Reagan, correct me from wrong, but we had $162 million in the biennial budget. We just carved out about $47 million for this current year. That leaves us about $113 next year. My prediction is the vast majority of that $113 is going to be earmarked to offset the loss that CDS has had, and we're not going to get general purpose aid. That's my gut feeling, and I'm very worried about that. So, the long and short of it is, with this very brief overview, and I'll ask Lynn to amplify, certainly any questions, we need to be very knowledgeable of what this conversation is. And if you have any opportunity to talk to our legislators, please let them know that this is front and center, or at least I would give you my opinion. This should be very much front and center in our conversation for public education in the legislature when they reconvene the generate timeframe. So, Lynn, please accentuate that and then open up for questions. Anything I missed there you want to amplify?
Well, I think my main concern is that there's already a shortage of special education teachers, so for us to even increase that is going to be difficult. Finding OTs and PTs and, you know, psychological services is something that's really, I've had it kind of add up for almost two years now, for at least two days for a psych person and can't even find anyone. So, I'm really concerned that the fact that this area, we don't have enough services to be able to -- that's a complaint that CDS made, that they couldn't find enough services, so they're going to move to the schools because the schools already have services in place. But we're really at capacity in some of these. So, that's my main concern.
Okay. So, this evening, people have questions. Janice, you're clear.
How many, how roughly, can you, and I know it fluctuates constantly, but in my experience, some years it could be five, and the next year it could be 25. So, can you have, like, say, in the last three or five years, what has been the transition from CDS to kindergarten program here? How many kids have gone about?
It's been, I want to say about 12, 15, maybe, transition. I mean, it comes, you know, depending upon the year. But also, there's a lot of parents that don't access CDS because it's difficult, it was difficult for them, so they wait until public schools. So, now that this is going to be open to public school, I see that number really being in the twenties.
And the, do you know?
And that's just for four-year-olds, so I'm not going to talk to public four-year-olds.
Right. And did CDS, did they supply transportation? I heard you say transportation. Did they supply transportation from the child's house to the service center?
Yes. They either reimburse parents or they use the link.
Okay, link, yep, yep, yep.
So, oh, I'm sorry. The name is helping me up. I don't think we just, somebody start talking. I tend to do that. You guys noticed?
Good.
So, then it sounds like the claim will likely be made that, yes, we're transferring services, you know, the care of these kids to local schools, but we are going to attach dollars to it.
That's the claim, yes.
And they're going to attach the dollars from money that we all really figured, when the budget deal was done, we're going to be coming to general purpose aid education dollars.
That's a good summation, yes.
Well, there's different funding from the CDS. I mean, when my son went there, we had to, it was our insurance that paid them. It wasn't state money. So, there's a different income stream. It's not state funding necessarily for CDS. CDS receives funding from insurance.
I think it's a combination of insurance.
But I'm glad, Tony, you brought that up because we, if you're not aware, we also charge certain expenditures off to main care. So, that question came up to someone today. That may be an opportunity for us. But I'm just concerned with, I guess my biggest concern is with the unknown of this. When it's unveiled, I don't know the moving parts. I don't know the composition of it. I don't know the demographics, what they would call it. I just don't know how they're looking to do this. Certainly, first and foremost, we want to serve the children's needs, but I think Lynn brings up a great point in the sense of the personnel we're trying to find. So, there are a lot of moving parts. But I guess basically tonight, I just want to make sure that you have the sensitivity and certainly the awareness that this needs to be a topic that we need to monitor very closely in the upcoming months.
So, just a thought about the awareness. There's a statement in the document that says that a number of districts have approached the department eager to take on the responsibility, and they're currently working with one district. Can we find out who that is, who the others are?
The only one I know.
And what their reason for being eager are, or maybe like the case study example of how that might overlay with the.
I'll ask the commissioner on that tomorrow. Because I shared earlier, the only one that I know, Rob, has publicly been aligned with the coordinated effort is RSU-10, which is the Dixfield area. But we'll ask Commissioner Hassan tomorrow to give us further explanation on that. Again, basically, we received this news 96 to 100 hours ago, so I probably know a little about what you know right now, and there's a certain level of frustration with that.
Does the state board have, do you know if this is bundled up for the state board?
That's a great question, and I didn't even think of that, by the way. But I'm going to be, I'm going to be in conversation with Martha Harris as the chair of our state board to see what her entity and agency is doing or their level of awareness of this as well. And I'll do that. So, I'll continue to update you every month as far as the ongoing bullets associated with this. But that's basically the overview as it relates to this potential transformation that could occur actually next year. Okay. Reagan.
Well, we have reviewed the warrant articles summary, and we will continue to do that at the second meeting of each month. I wanted to update you that the Department of Education came and visited both Weatherby School and McGrath School as the first stage of their inquiry about our application for building projects. The Weatherby project and the McGrath project were submitted as separate projects, so both of those buildings were rated based on their own merits. And we had a team that consisted of the school principals. The head custodians assisted us. We had several members of the DOE team. David Greney and myself went on the visits. I would say that we were talked to for about an hour at each of the buildings and asked to give a rundown of all of the different aspects of the building from safety to utilities to classroom instructional facilitation, ADA access, and so forth. And based on our responses, the team will go back and rate each of our buildings in all of those categories, and scores will be derived. There are approximately 80 other applications that are also being reviewed, and we were in the first tier of inspection sites. So, we will probably hear toward the end of the year where our scoring lands on each of the buildings. And we might end up in a situation where our buildings have very different scoring dependent on the needs. And that is where Mr. Lyons referenced, that we know we're getting to capacity, especially at McGrath. We certainly are finding that all of our spaces are taken. I will say that the team was quite complimentary about how those buildings are being maintained and kept up on a day-to-day basis and longer term with the facilities management. And Mr. Lyons did have a chat with Mr. Brown, who is the head of the team, about some ideas for visioning out plans for facilities maintenance and also just having campus development occur. So, we'll be back to you on that. Any questions about the application or the visit?
I would make a point for the board's awareness, Reagan, that at the Weatherby School, it was very clear with respect to the physical barriers of that school and how it was conveyed, Lynn, and again, correct me if I misstate this, how some children with special needs that we couldn't accommodate, we actually have go to Reed's Brook because of the fiscal plant versus Weatherby's plant. And they were very, they were awestruck by that with respect to the limitations that school has. They're cleanly in the school and things like that. That wasn't any question. But when you can't get from floor one to floor two at Weatherby, that's a major issue for us. So, that was also amplified when we met with them. Okay, Kim?
Oh, I'm sorry. Lucas. We have Lucas up tonight. Lucas?
Okay. So, basically, what I'd like to talk about for a second is a way that I could implement something, kind of an electronic contact system between students and the student representatives. So, essentially, the goal is to increase communication between representatives and the students directly. And I think the best way to do that would be electronically because you'd be able to reach the maximum amount of students in the shortest amount of time in the most efficient way. So, I'm thinking about producing something like a mass email that has a link to a Google form where students can actually respond and directly speak to representatives without having to approach them or be approached. So, they can present things that they'd like to present, and then the representatives can transfer that. transfer that into the actual setting. And I think that would be beneficial for the entire population. So essentially, it proposes an option for increased student immersion and data collection about their opinions in an easier way than I think would be to actually try to talk to the students one-on-one or rely on them to talk to us.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Question of the board members, and I have one for you, Lucas. I'm not sure if you're able to, but I think that maybe having you attend one of the community relations committee meetings and kind of massaging that idea a little bit would be really beneficial to the board. So I think it's a great act that you're taking on, and I would love to have more opportunities for students to kind of have a voice at the table. So congratulations on that, but love to kind of help see that come to fruition too. So definitely Scott's the chair, and I recommend you might connect with him.
Yeah, I think all, both the committee members and other committee members agree too that it's the kind of thing that we're trying to do community-wide, and that's another segment of the community that we can reach out to. I'll add you to the list of, we're glad to listen to emails. Thank you, Lynn.
Other questions of board members? Committee reports. Finance? Pete?
You're over here.
It's true, much of what I was hearing.
No subject committee, whatever.
Not for a while.
Yeah, athletic just a few minutes ago. We talked, majority of our conversation was based around the mobile purpose field. We have a preliminary price. Of course, in order to go any further, we'd have to get bids, but it's just to give us an idea of what it will cost. We've talked about a number for quite a while, and so this will kind of nail it down a little closer. It's not the final number, but like I said, we'll have to bid it out. But first of all, it would be a little bit, those of you who've been on the turf, you've seen that the softball field had plugs taken out of it. So that would no longer be the case at all, even around home plate. It would all be turf. The original one, they used to take plugs out of first, second, third base, and where the pitcher stood. I don't know if they, I don't know if that's a mound, I want to call it a mound. But they have been leaving those in, but it's a, it looks terrible. I mean, you barely even walk, it's all riffled. So, I mean, that was a really poor, it was bad to the turf. And so by having it turf everywhere, hopefully we can eliminate that issue. So that, so this would include that. It would include purple end zones, which would be really pretty. Field hockey lines would be painted permanently on the turf. Now, we're painting them on for that season. Same thing goes with hash marks. Those hash marks are all painted on the football field. And the price of that would be $649,000, $650,000 basically. And then there was a couple of things that we were looking at doing a little additionally. Around the edge of the turf is a little crushed stone, so we were looking at filling that whole area in so that we would get away from the crushed stone. A lot of times the crushed stone will be up on the turf and tracking around. And the custom logo of the HA that's already in the middle, that would be about $30,000. So the additional turf was about $80,000, with the HA logo would be about $30,000. So total cost about $760,000. That was, like I said, that's preliminary, that's just something that we've kind of researched, and now the committee is going to go ahead to go forth, you know, research more. But then we talked about signage. I've reported before. So Fred Lauer, Bill Tracy, and Nick Raymond have all visited South Portland, where they've done basically the same thing, and they're one year into selling signage. So they came back with some great information, some ideas of places to put signage around scoreboards, around the fence, and keep it in mind all the time that we're trying to make it look professional at the same time. There would also be spots to scoreboard on the baseball field, scoreboard in our gym. Basically, if you added it all up, I didn't add it all, but I'm just kind of thinking in my head, we're looking at probably 75, 80 spots where there'd be signage. We did talk about prices. There was different sponsorship. South Portland did different levels of sponsorship, all the way from a presenting sponsor, which was $3,000 per year, all the way down to a friend sponsor, which would be $500. Of course, there'd be different levels of sponsorship, you'd get different, you'd be on different areas of signage, and scoreboardage would be more. And it was a little bit cheaper because there was some cost for the original signs. So if you went out two or three years, it would be, we would save some money that way. And then we went into, Fred reported us that we have a new sound system at the turf, and he reports that that's working very well. And we talked about family ID. Fred had talked to us about that here a couple of months ago. He's ready to move forth with that. He's going to have a kind of a soft opening at the high school level this winter and work some of the bugs out of it. And next fall, we're hoping to unveil that completely at the high school, Wagner, and Reed's Brook. And what that is, it's an online-based data collection for all athletics. So coaches will have all that stuff in any electronic that they are using, they'll have it at their fingertips. So if they have a phone on the field, a kid gets hurt, they need information, it'll be on the phone. The trainers will all have it, everything will be right here handy. They will have a packet of papers that they may or may not actually have on them at the time, but they always have our phones nowadays, so. The Coca-Cola contract that is with the Boosters, they signed the last one in 2012, it was for $16,000. And they took that money and bought four scoreboards for us. I know where two of them are, but I don't know where they all are, but they're on their campus here somewhere. And so we're looking at signing another contract. We're uncertain about how much it is, but I would assume it would be at least $16,000. And that money, Boosters have agreed that that money will go towards the turf. So that'll add a little bit more to our, to our goal there. And that was about it.
Hey, how much money do we have towards the turf? Do we have anything at all?
About a hundred.
Tickets, that's about it.
Yeah. Is it about a hundred, less than a hundred?
Less than a hundred.
Less than a hundred.
So for the advertising discussions, is there like a target goal in terms of like launch date? Because, Keith, you know, we've been talking about that for a while.
As far as the advertising?
Yeah, just starting to like raise money. That would be good.
Well, we are going to be again in October, and we're going to keep going with that. And like Mr. Tracy brought up, they have that spring, this is basically local, I mean, no company new for is going to want to advertise here. So this is something that we need to, you know, advertise to our area. And last year, they had the business symposium type thing, they had it here in the high school. So that'd be a great time, because those are all local businesses that are here, and that would be a great time to talk to those people. That would be probably in March. So it would be nice if we could have something up and running before.
I'm all for, you know, improved access to facilities, and we are going to be going for an ask soon after, or if not at the same time, that the town's going for a big ask in Handen for fielding, for facilities development. And so I'm just being mindful of that.
That's a good point. We talked about a little bit of that, but that, we kind of forgot about that. That'll be another.
There's a public meeting on the 28th about that, is at Handen.
Yeah. And could you share, we had a picture there of some of the lines and how they're sunk in. Is there, do you have that on? Or you could get it from Mr. Raymond, probably.
You want me to show it?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's too bad, the New England Patriots literally just ripped up their turf field that they've used twice. I mean, it's better than doing it.
Call it, John.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I don't remember, the way the wide receivers are going down, maybe there's something about that we don't, we just lost on it.
Oh, what, we're going on our 14th year?
Fifty.
It's our 15th year right now? Which is, that's now, it's at the point where it might not be safe. I mean, we don't have a lot long.
It's supposed to be a seven to 10 year, wasn't it?
Well, 10 at least, yeah. No more than 10.
Which photo did you want?
Well, the one there where he showed the line, it was significantly sunk in. You can see this, if you walk in the turf, some of the lines are like this, but he had a real good picture here with a board across it that showed how sunk in that line is.
Why, where is that line?
It's on the sideline, and it's pretty much everywhere.
I was going to say, is that in the middle of the field that'd be possible?
There is some, they are sunk in in the middle. Not that, maybe not that bad, but you can notice it.
Why do they sink in?
I don't know that.
Have they put so much paint on it that it's become solid and it's?
Those are sewn in.
It's like?
Those are sewn in.
So it's just reacting differently than the rest?
Something to do with the filling of the teeth, but. Fifteen years of wearing hair. Yeah.
Have we had any contact from the NTA or anybody like that saying we can't host a tournament anymore? Or any difference?
Yes, the soccer has voiced that, that they will be looking to go elsewhere because of the field conditions.
So when do we anticipate, when does the athletic committee think we need to repair this field? I mean, we keep talking about it, and I'm afraid we're going to wait until we're like, can't even use it.
Well, we talked about, of course, the signage is going to help, but at some point we may have to go to referendum. So it would either be a June or November referendum, so.
The budget.
I'm just going to jump in, just add to your question here. And how like Keith said, we may have to be looking at having something added to our June referendum. And integrate that with our budget question to accelerate that as soon as for next year.
Didn't we talk in one of our last meetings, something about, someone's going to research grants, athletic grants to get this, to go towards this, or during the?
I do remember something. I think we talked about the potential linking with the Handen rec department, didn't we? If the municipality and the school business?
No, grant research was specifically mentioned.
We were talking about grant research in reference to the Wagner field, but I don't know, I don't know if there would be, I mean, it's definitely.
There's also been discussion, I had a chat with the Winterport Rec Director regarding the town field, which is also in tough shape in Winterport, but the thought was that we look at it as a district-wide situation where if overuse of one field is causing it to be torn up or worn out, if looking at it holistically so that the money that could be spent and distributed around so that maybe practice fields or other fields are useful at times for different groups, and it would take some of the pressure off of the play fields. It might allow us to get a little more time, and if we looked at it that way, it might prove to be less expensive than just going after all the expensive fields and doing nothing else. It might buy us some time on the others. So I hope that the Winterport Rec Director, and I will speak to him, attends the Handen forum, because they're having a parallel discussion right now for that very reason. I mean, all the kids are, there's really a blurred line between rec and school and the use of the fields in many cases, so.
Almost all the youth programs are involving kids from Winterport.
They're the same kids, they're the same kids.
Frankfurt even.
Yeah. So I think you weigh on Frankfurt, is it Frankfurt that is a wonderful field right now?
Yeah, but apparently it's too small.
Oh.
Yes, Lily's field. It's only 60 feet.
But yeah, it's a great field for, I know Lily uses it, probably, yeah.
Well, thanks for that update, Keith. Lots to, lots, you're doing a lot. Showing a lot of that. Building committee, Ellen?
No, since long, we didn't post the minutes from our last meeting, but we haven't had a meeting since the last report.
All right. Education committee?
Yep, we met right before this. It was a good meeting. We actually took the entire meeting to look at the strategic plan, as everyone remembers when we went over the strategic plan in the summer sometime. The education committee had quite a few assignments, and so we wanted to look at that early in the year so we could kind of create a timeline and a to-do list for the entire year. And we have some next steps, and we have a few things that we're going to be bringing forth to the larger board. We have to kind of create some structure and definition around some of our action steps. Our immediate next step is to work on action strategy number two, enhance, define, and/or develop a system of differentiated learning personalized to the students' needs. And there was a lot of question about what that really means and what's really realistic to ask of our teachers. Right, Jane?
Right.
So our next meeting will be digging down a little bit deeper into that. And then we created some goals for the year, and one was to create, define, and communicate, hopefully with the communication committee, by the end of this school year, very clear kind of descriptions of the proficiency-based diploma. Because the current sophomores are going to be the first class to graduate with this proficiency-based diploma. So we need to make sure that we're very clear about what that means and what the expectations are. And another goal is to, part of the proficiency-based diploma also includes educational experiences. And so we really need to understand and define what is the criteria for an educational experience, and also the business or an organization can be part of providing that educational experience. What is the criteria for that business or organization that they have to meet so that we aren't just sending our kids to anyone? So, that would be that.
Great, thank you. Policy committee, John, do you have anything? UTC board, Ellen?
They'll meet tomorrow night.
I guess I'll get to you, and probably, do we have any ad hoc, have you sent something out about that?
Ad hoc committee for superintendent evaluation, the only person that decided to make. Is there anyone else that has an interest in helping look at the superintendent evaluation before Jane and I set up a meeting?
Okay. Do you want to, Scott?
He does, he's very eager. I do want to. I absolutely do want to. I'm just.
I feel the same way.
I'm just picturing going home and explaining how I signed up for yet another.
Well, it's on tape, so you should.
Yeah.
If you're both interested, I can at least loop you into emails as we have discussions if you have availability.
No, I, this, I mean, it's something that we talked about during the, when we were doing superintendent evaluation last time, and having been part of that, it makes sense to then be part of the next phase of it too.
All right. I'll bring it to you later.
Maybe we can chat at the end of the meeting and see when maybe a convenient time.
Yeah.
It won't impact over two.
Great. Do you have anything about ad hoc substances?
Next meeting's going to be October 2nd at 4:00 P.M.
Okay. And community relations, Scott?
No, I reported out on both our last two meetings at our previous board meeting. And I had actually wanted to make mention of that, that that needs to be added in the minutes that I reported out, both on the 8/8 meeting, but also on the September 5th meeting, in the minutes for last time around. But I wouldn't hear we need to do that, so. But no, so there hasn't been a meeting since then. Our next meeting is going to be the first Tuesday of next month.
Is there October 3rd?
Great, thank you.
Five? I have my calendar.
So we have three policies for consideration, actually two policies and regulations. John, do you want to introduce those?
Sure. The first one is policy DIE, audits and financial monitoring. The only thing that changed on that, I think what you were saying is the law changed, is the date?
Yeah, that aligns with state law.
So from December 1st to the 31st?
Exactly.
So, motion for approval, first meeting on that? So, second?
Any discussion on that, or questions? Great, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Second one, this one's got a few more changes. This is recommendation from MSNA, JLCD administering medicines to students. Quite a few updates on that policy. I was just looking at the highlights here. Description administration of medications for the parents, request, you know, current school year, so all the right there is all the updates. Bob, do you have anything you want to add to the policy piece?
This was to put it in better alignment with the new language around controlled substances and to more clearly define that this is, the medication policy is different from the medical marijuana policy, so that's in there as well. And also to create language around an MOU with our school physician regarding the stocking of EpiPens for schools.
So motion for the, so first reading.
You have a second? Second. Any discussion?
I just have one question, and I think it's, it's just, maybe it's dramatic. When I read it, I read it out loud to myself, and I mean, when I read it, I read it out loud to myself and I still couldn't get it to make really clear sense. And when you said it was supposed to be really clear, I'm thinking, okay. It is in, it's the third paragraph?
Which page?
It's on page one, third paragraph, before any medicine shall be administered in school. And it's the part that says, this request shall be accompanied by a written order for the medication required. Minutes except high school and middle school level where some non-prescription medications can be approved by persons greater than three weeks. So if you just leave that whole thing out, it says, this request shall be accompanied by the written order for the medication required, greater than three weeks are in the case of a less than three-week prescription. Their original labeled prescription bottle will suffice. Just the wording of it is, I mean, I think I understand what it means.
Yeah.
But do you think we think it?
So if it's greater than three weeks, they have to have a prescription. If it's less than three weeks, just the bottle will do it.
The prescription bottle will do it, right.
Right, but does that?
We could put that into separate sentences so it was a little clearer.
Yeah, I think that, it's not that I didn't understa, it just, I thought it was very wordy and when those percent parentheses were in it with.
And I'm not sure the syntax actually ends up meaning that, like, in a literal, literal sense.
It doesn't, it was the, almost, I kept thinking it was the tense off, there was something off, so maybe we could clean that up just a bit.
It's an Australian comma again.
Yes, that comma, it's that comma. Only be, only because I know those things create issues in a school when it's not really.
And on the permit, it is more clearly written, I think, so I can put it the way it's written on the permit.
Okay, that would be, thank you.
I'm sure one of the English teachers at the high school would've scolded me for that.
Right.
Well, I think it was probably a combination of things and when they were put together, it just didn't all sort out correctly.
I think just the word if, actually.
Maybe.
If greater than.
And, and then later on.
But, you know, we don't need to.
Policy Committee will take that back.
Yeah, and I'm sure that, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but that was just, I didn't read it, it tells you I didn't read it.
Very good.
I hope so.
One thing that I, you can choose to ignore, but you may wanna consider is that same paragraph in the red font on the bottom. It says, it is the responsibility of the school nurse to clarify any medication order that she, that he, she believes to be inappropriate. Ambiguous, I, ambiguous, sorry. I would like to just cut that sentence in half and then just say, it is the responsibility of the school nurse to clarify any medication order, period. I just don't like the subjectivity in the second half of that sentence. I think it kind of could generate or garner some discussion that's not needed. So take that for what it's worth.
So just.
We don't actually have to clarify every order though, if it's, only if we believe in orders in error or ambiguous.
Well, maybe it's the word inappropriate I'm not comfortable with.
Maybe we'll get words made.
Sure.
Did that wording come from someplace?
Main school management.
School management.
That was directly from main school management.
So it's my understanding that the medicine would theoretically be brought in by the parent or guardian to the school and that we are keeping records of the dose at the time.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
What happens, or maybe we can address in the language here, what happens when it either expires or when the dose is not completely taken at the school? That we basically notify that, is it in here?
It's in the regulation. It's in the regulation, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
The parent is responsible for.
So it will be disposed of.
For the parent's responsibility.
We've told them that, you know, when it's expired, don't expect, we're not liable for not keeping expired medication, even if they want access.
Correct, nor will we give it to the child to take on.
Yes, and maybe just in, we're placing appropriate with.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, whatever word you use. Any other discussion about the policy? Great, we have a first and a second, so all those in paper, first reading, any opposed?
Next one's on the regulation, JLCDR. There are a number of changes on this one, pages one and two. C has been amended. Page three, four and five have been amended. And then the remainder from eight on to the end of the regulation, that's all been amended. And in number seven, it actually was, it was one thing, Mr. Miller. It says allergic reaction to insects things, it also should say food or insect stings. Bob mentioned that. And then on number eight, for self-administration of asthma inhalers and epinephrine auto-injectors. If you turn the page, it says students, it should, with allergies, it should say diabetes as well. So students with diabetes, allergies, or asthma, and then also include insulin in there. For self-administration. And this is well, results of committee, MSMA.
Great, so you're asking for a motion for first reading?
Where is it?
A motion for regulation?
Um, for this one?
Bob, can you, just the expiration clause, where is it in the regulation again, go quick?
It is on the second page. It says the request is valid for only a year only, for a year only. And then somewhere in here, it talks about parents picking up medication.
Yeah, I remember.
So that's the request from the parent, I'm talking about the actual medication itself.
It is in here.
In, in. In partnered with that, it's just, I guess if it expires and we dispose of it properly, if the parent still assumes that the medication is here and available at the school, is there any duty on our part to notify them?
We do notify them.
You know, it's expired, we're disposing, you need to bring in new and it's done, just so we're not creating a liability?
Yes, we contact parents and do that.
I, I scanned it, I didn't see it, but.
I think it's, there was a sentence in the policy.
Yeah, it is in here, there's so many pages.
Rick, you specifically mentioned that in our last policy, and now I can't find it.
I know, I read it.
I know it's in there because I read it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we sure we're not confusing the policy?
I know, where's the, the policy now?
There is a sentence in the policy that says that.
Well, number five, page two, is that what you're talking about?
Well, the parent may be responsible for notifying a change in discontinu, discontinuation of the medication. I'm talking about the fact that it actually expires while it's in our care, that we should not be administering it. And we should notify that we're going to dispose of it properly.
Well, only just made a good example, how about the policy committee take the regulation policy back? Make sure that's in there and highlight it when you bring it back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you will. And if it's not, then we'll put it in there.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
I don't know if we had a motion in.
There is a sentence in that, you asked where it is, it's in the, at the end of the paragraph. It says, parent guardian is responsible for delivery. I'm in the policy now. Medicine no longer required must be removed by the parent guardian.
Right here.
Yeah, thank you. In the policy.
Thank you.
Right there.
But that was medicine no longer required? Is that right? Yeah, Rob's.
Doesn't exist, but we're not gonna let them roll through our medicine cabinet and grab their stuff and throw it away. We've gotta be responsible for that. I mentioned the parents are.
Right, they're responsible for taking it home.
Yeah.
Get it out, but they're not respons, they're not gonna go into the cabinet.
All right, so John, you have your, you're gonna strengthen that?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, just the key words are just expiration and the notification of that.
Right.
That was really all it's.
Got it. Did we have a motion?
I don't know, so.
Do we have a motion now? Do we have a second?
Seven.
Great, any more discussion about the regulation?
So first reading, yes.
First reading here. Okay, all those in here. Any opposed? Good, thank you. Thank you. All right, old business regarding the resolution affirming commitment to education. This had come in front of the board at our last meeting and we had discussion about that. Policy Committee had brought it forth for board consideration and ended up being debated among the board and did pass for first reading. It was going back to the policy committee and then we had a couple of board members who requested come back to the full board for further discussion. I think, I'll just, I think we can respectfully respect each other's differences while we have this discussion. So I will open the floor and I don't know if, Rob, since you weren't here at the last meeting and you had some questions, if you wanted to open the floor.
Sure, well, I guess, I missed the last thing, again, I was out of country and when I read the medicine, I read the resolution. It sort of immediately popped up as a, as a hot topic, I guess you would say, on a national platform and in the, a fairly quick search of three simple words pointed that there, there are at least four organizations that have made it a national movement to specifically create these resolutions in, in the wake of the current national discussion, simply as a way of creating a national conversation that really adds to the current discourse that you see happening. To me, a resolution is non-binding. As we learned during our budget process, it's to, to show clear intent of the board on an action that it intends to take. When I looked at the resolution, and more importantly, when I looked at the, what are the, step-by-step guides, understanding the sanctuary school and safe zone movement, I mean, it's literally a recipe that you can follow. But one thing I found interesting is it references at least, it, it word for word mentions Plyler versus Doe, that was a simple search and it immediately went to this document. It identifies the Family Educational Rights Privacy Act, the Fourteenth Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, the Tenth Amendment, standard policy of U.S. immigration to custom enforcement. It basically highlighted the fact that there's so many protections in place that would prevent, what I heard, the concern of happening, that it's almost a moot point. It would be like, say you need a policy that suggests that the lights turn off automatically because they already do. I asked as best I could of some folks that are in a law enforcement field, if they were aware of the cases of that in main schools, they were not personally aware. But they really pointed out, and it's pointed out in this guide, without a, without a court order, which has all the information that someone needs irrespective of what they may or may not have learned in a school environment, they're not gonna, nine times out of ten, or ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they're not gonna come to a school as a public property. They already have identified an individual or situation and they're gonna handle it tactically outside of a public school or a public setting. I think there are some clear national examples that have been circulating social media about instances that have happened in the West Coast. One of which involved a forty-eight-year-old, of the twenty-five-year-old arrest policy with a twelve and a thirteen-year-old that witnessed an arrest. Doing some simple math, I guess I have a question why if, if, if folks don't like the laws of immigration, they should change them, they should talk to the congressman, they should change them. It's not for a school board to express a statement that makes a, really a fundamental position statement towards clearly documented policy in my mind. And it's, it's clear to me that it's being done in some way that's to send a message. And that's, that's what I immediately read, and I wasn't reading it at the meeting. I didn't look at the, I didn't have the chance to look at the video or see some of the testimony and the thoughts. And I know in the past, and it's really separate from or related to this issue, we have typically avoided such politically motivated conversations. I think the, the resolutions that we've had in the past have been to address issues with our constituents where there is a need that affects our, R S U students, the families, et cetera. I think of budget, we came up with a resolution because we had a lot of concern with moving targets of what would we do if additional money came, what would we do there? We clearly shared a resolution and it was clearly pointed out that it was non-binding, but it showed our intent as a board what we would do in that situation. I think some of the language that I read in the policy, I'm not sure.
It's not policy, it's a resolution.
The resolution. I mean, I could go through and highlight quite a few of the words that are clearly the suggestive of the national discussion right now. But I think it was the one that talked about. I will come back to, but it basically describes that we would do everything in our power to legally block such acts. It's when, in my mind, and I appreciate the comments I heard at the beginning of the session about how folks would feel if information was cleaned in a, in a lunchroom setting or a report or this and that. I mean, with, with social media today so prevalent, it's, with most folks, they're, what they eat for dinner is pretty clearly obvious on a public platform, let alone their political motivations. But the, the issue of people coming into the school and, you know, working kids out of classrooms or using information they glean from a classroom. I just, I, I, are we aware, has there ever been an instance in the history of R S U twenty-two where that's happened? Number one, is there, is there a problem or is there concern? Two, how could it happen without a valid search warrant? Perhaps a simple discussion and a, and a clarification of where and why that should be a resolution that has to maybe lead to a policy. The final amendment I saw suggested that armed with this resolution, the superintendent will work with legal counsel, identify any new policies or rules that should be developed. Again, I, we have issues of parents not understanding how to access the Pearson Math Primer for parents so they don't know how to help their kids out with, with everyday math. That's a problem that affects every student at school. I don't, I, I'm not aware that this, this affects any student at our school, nor do I wanna see a list that validates that it is true. That's the whole point of this current discussion. I think if we look at it, it's, it's just a resolution that only doesn't show full board intent. And to do it from a matter of a vote is a bit of a shift from how we've dealt with these matters in the past. And that's kind of how I'd see it. We've usually been pretty clearly unanimous in our resolutions in the past and we worded them so, or as such, until we got to that point. Because it's not policy, it's not regulation, this is, it's non-binding intent. If one were simply to look at it, if you're looking for litmus test of our, our constituents that voted us in, in whether they're more socially or liberally leaning in their, or conservative or liberally leaning in their social premise, I think one simply needs to look at the last election results for the four standing districts to see where some of our constituents are coming from that may present also concern about such a policy in a lot of the, really the, the lightning words that come out of it. So that's where I'm coming from.
So John, you were the chair of the policy committee and Rob wasn't here and I don't know, Miles wasn't here last. Do you wanna just give some insight into the discussion the policy committee had made to this that, you know, some crucial pieces of that that you thought were relevant enough to warrant bringing that resolution to the board for review?
Uh, I mean, Scott, you can join in. When it was originally discussed, it was, it was, well, what Mary, to summarize what Mary had said, and it was also to look at, instead of having a hard and fast policy because of the winds of change, that we would look at just having a, look at just having the resolution just as a guideline procedure in case they show up and to help our building principals know what to do, what they should do. We had nothing in place. So it was really just the flavor of it. And I think the thing was because it's still, you know.
you know, resolution was because we usually act when it's looking at the wellness and overall safety of, of students, which we have done, I think we've done in the past when there was a national issue around transgender, we created a policy around transgender as well, because we had nothing. So, we responded to that national issue, which is in the courts as well. Scott, am I missing anything?
No, I mean, Mary and I have had a number of discussions about this issue, and what it came down to for me was, as you said, John, that we didn't have a policy, so if something did happen, there's no guidance for our administrators. And on the other side of it for me was, if this is put into place and nobody ever shows up, there's no harm. This isn't going to be a, a lightning rod, it's not going to be something that is, you know, put out there, I mean, Portland, you know, Alan, you were talking last time around about Portland, they did it a while ago, and I had no idea, so there wasn't, I didn't see a downside to it. We were gonna hopefully put something in place that would give the administration an idea of what to do, and as you said, you know, I mean, we, we've acted on sort of lightning rod issues, things that are tough, not only the LGBTQ+, sort of affirmation and support that we gave to administrators and staff both, but also when last year we had a couple of instances of people riding into the parking lot with the Confederate flag, and staff came to us and said, we need some, some way to deal with this. So, I also thought this was wonderful in, in terms of being proactive, and it certainly is a response to national issues, there's no question, but it is acting locally to give our administration, our administrative team a sense of how to handle this, so that was where I was coming from with my support for the motion.
So, since this is up for discussion, I'm just going to put it out there, put a motion that this be tabled for the time being, thus the motion that's on the floor. Is there a second? I'm sorry, it's your line.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and it's up for discussion. Do we need to discuss the motion before we vote on that?
Well, I think that we do need a policy, we need some guidance on how to deal with these issues if they come up in the future. The issue of, we, we do have a policy that talks about religion, we don't have a policy that talks about politics. It's interesting if one researches the First Amendment, the, what we are doing in a public school as its representatives, or as its administrators, or as its teachers, are dealt with separately under the First Amendment than it is for students. Students aren't protected while they're in the school to say pretty much whatever, anything they want unless it's a violation of school policy or disruptive. It means they can wear T-shirts, they can say things about current topics, et cetera. They're, they're basically mirrors in many cases of their parents and the things that they learn at home, which is also an obligation of the family to be part of that education. During the school setting though, that protection is not afforded to teachers, to administrators, to the school board, and my concern is that to create such policies that become part of the common conversation that are in the schools, now become a policy in a directive of the school, which is now getting in front of the students in that, that, and that's where we're crossing.
So, can I ask for, the, the motion, Tony, is to table the resolution or the topic of immigration?
Table the resolution.
The resolution.
Not the topic of immigration.
Okay. We have a second. About the motion of the resolution, is there any discussion that needs to have before we vote?
So, just to clarify, we're going to continue this discussion.
About immigration, yes, but not this resolution.
Do, so, are, are you in favor of the policy committee possibly looking at the development of a policy?
Of a legally binding policy that has been reviewed by our attorneys, yes.
Can I add also my sentence as I listened to the conversation, I think it's great. I want to remind you, and I want to amplify this, remember the policy we discussed extensively, this labeled something like in the absence of policy, the superintendent can? I want to bring that up again because as we're, as we're having a good conversation about the complexity of this, there are going to be situations as we guide a system forward, there are going to be themes whereby we don't have a policy, how does this, as your superintendent policy, in the absence of policy, also come into light? Because remember the last year and a half, we brought that policy up on the table at least two or three times, so I'd like to put that in the mix as well.
I think, I think if you feel that you need a policy, and maybe other administrators feel that also, there's just a lot in this resolution, it's still, it's still not a policy, so if you're feeling you need a policy, maybe that's the way we should go.
Well, I feel like resolutions are by nature somewhat positional.
Right, yeah.
And I think that might be where there's some discomfort, whereas policies are meant to be very clear, directive of guidance, that should take a motion out of it, so...
I guess I brought up the policy I'm trying to reference because maybe we can give that greater definition, because I don't necessarily say to you as your current superintendent you the policy, but I want to understand if I were to make a, a decision now with that policy, I can give you my rationale, that's the policy I use as my defense, if you will. I'm just saying we want to look at that to make sure, what we want to do, or do we want to get a, give a greater definition, whatever that looks like, I'm not sure either, so.
Keep going.
Does tabling do what you really want to do with this?
No.
Do you want to come back next month?
Something you want to kill this, though, right?
Right.
I want to, I want to skip over the resolution, and I want to go to policy. I want something that's been vetted and has legal ground so that we're not sticking our neck out saying, well, we're going to be a safe haven, and we're going to bar federal agents from coming in here with a search warrant. They have a search warrant.
Well, resolution doesn't say that though, Tony.
A point of order.
All right, so point of order.
Point of order on, on tabling. Tabling is, tabling is done when there's a pending motion, and rules of order are, are subjective, they can be adjusted by anybody and they can be done the way they want, but when you have a main motion on the table, which is, let's say that, that we were actually discussing for second reading, and there's a motion made to approve this for second reading, it was seconded during discussion, Tony made a motion to table. If that motion was loaded on, then the motion would be taken, the main motion would die, and you would set the bill on the table, so you stop discussing it.
We would stop discussing it.
We're currently just having a discussion about it. But I made the motion before the motion was made to accept it, so... Right, there is, there is no main motion. The main motion is to table it, because I made that motion before we made a motion to accept it. Which is why I'm saying it's, it's a particular point because it's, a, a table, a motion to table is a secondary motion that can only apply when a main motion exists. Okay. Which is a very technical thing, but I just wanted to... Okay.
So...
Well, then I'll revise my motion.
Want to, do you want to withdraw your motion and, do you want to withdraw your motion?
I just want to be able to say motion to adjourn, but, yes, I will withdraw my motion...
I would encourage you, I would ask you to do that.
Yeah, I will withdraw my motion to revise it. However, we need to revise it so that we can move this to a policy and not a political whatever.
So, I think that that doesn't necessarily require a vote, but that we ask the policy committee to have further discussion about this topic, and we will bring it back to the full board with a, a recommendation.
It was already approved for first reading, it was suggested that it would, would immediately move to second reading at the same meeting, that was also a little...
It was amended, the, the motion that passed was...
I, I understand, but again, catching up to a reading in minutes, we, I don't, I'm not aware we've ever done that before, it looked like it was kind of being...
No, we've done that before with policies. We haven't, we haven't passed more than one resolution since I joined the board.
So...
And I'll be happy to say that I was naive in, in moving for first and second, because to me, it was a clear statement of giving the administration some guidance, so I didn't anticipate there being strong feelings in opposition, so had I thought there were going to be strong feelings of opposition, I never would have moved first and second at the same time.
And I will just say this, we're still in discussion, I would absolutely endorse creating a policy that free of emotion, free of repetitive use of words that are playing out in a national stage, that have no business in being a resolution or a policy, because simply stating the laws that are in effect are exactly the kind of guidance that we're saying we, we think we need, and perhaps even refresh a course in the Constitution so folks know about all the things that have been around for hundreds of years that protect folks against these, so, I mean, that's where we should be coming at, is from, from that, just, these are the rules, you know, take out the motion as you say, make it, make it just very clear.
So, will John and Rick, can you reach out to our legal counsel and just get some more guidance on that?
So, basically, this is being sent to the policy committee for review, yes.
Can I make just two suggestions for the policy committee? Outside of all, like, so, the immigration is a government, we're talking about a government agency, could we just include every government agency?
Yes.
I think about, I, you know, I...
That came up somewhere in one of our conferences.
Yeah, I used to be a child protective worker, and there were very clear guidelines about when I was allowed in school and not. So, that was one, and then two, just a question, something that you had brought up is, we don't want a teacher to share information that they learn about in a student's essay or, or whatever. In healthcare, our responsibility is we aren't to disclose that information, like, we learn about crimes, or we learn about things that could get people in trouble, and we're not to disclose that unless it's a, a safety concern. So, is there a similar guideline in schools?
Let me research some policies and see what we can align this with, maybe to piggyback what we already have in place.
A reference to...
There you go, that's right, that's correct, so we'll do that.
Good, thank you for that discussion, it was nice to have respect for this course.
It absolutely was, and again, I, there are, there are national websites that are tracking this exact conversation. Folks are given positive recognition, recognition of support, they're also being given black eyes where they aren't supporting and being suggested that they're boycotting other things, so I don't want to be in a list anywhere that plays any part of this national conversation, it's playing out nationally, that's where it belongs, we can all vote, and we can all talk about it to our legislators, but not at the school board. That's where policy needs to exist, as a policy.
This is where the voting delegation in the October meeting have met with the Main School Boards Association, they also be a very, very asset for us, see where the school districts are doing. If you attend conferences, it'd be a great conversation when you have a lunch with someone, what are you doing about this theme back home in policy, so. We have...
Great. We have no new business, so for meeting dates, do we have any committees that need to set meeting dates?
Just the ad hoc superintendent evaluation, we'll take care of that after we... I will, I was remiss, I will let you know that we are ready to be starting tomorrow for our district accounting position. It's not a committee, but it's a process that's moving forward, so.
And Athletic did set a meeting date for October 18, 6:00 p.m., before our, our...
October 18?
Yeah.
Six o'clock, Athletic, yeah.
And the policy committees changed their meeting to 5:00 p.m.?
Yes, ma'am, 5:00 o'clock.
Thank you.
Sure.
And finance is the Tuesday, the 26th, at 3:30.
Yes.
All right, thank you all, motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor? I was shooting for eight, Tony.